What do you think is magic about Minot?
There's literally something for everyone.
Checking out a local restaurant.
Baseball.
Baseball.
Walking into a small business and visiting with the shop owner.
I think Minot's community-minded businesses make it magic.
Be thrilled.
Rediscover.
Experience.
With the magic of Minot.
How the community rallies around the Minot Air Force Base members and spouses that come to work in the Magic City.
To evolve.
The support.
Be part of the magic in Minot.
We can do anything.
Come and see.
The residents that make Minot magic, and that's what I love about Minot.
Go Minot!
The recreation.
Get down!
The community.
The magic of discovery.
This community promotes literacy.
It is the energy!
You know what makes Minot magic to me?
It's our downtown.
I believe Mesa really puts the magic in Minot.
Opportunity.
The culture.
The generosity and the unyielding friendliness.
The way our community comes together.
Be a part of the magic in Minot.
Hey, Minot, 2020 is the year for more. Yes, it's the U.S. Census season, and with it, Minot could see more. More opportunities for business. More federal funding for roads, for our schools, and for our community. Take part in something more. Take the census, because for us, more means more. Visit minotnd.org to learn more.
This dumpster has a very important role for our community. To extend the lifetime of our landfill and also limit methane gas from leaking into our air and into the community. But for that to happen, there's only one simple rule that needs to be followed. Dump only leaves and grass. This is why compost sites only take grass and leaves. When compost is dumped here, it's then brought here, and in just a few weeks, it will go here. A six-to-eight-week process to create clean, nutrient-rich, and free topsoil.
Now, separating this organic material from your household trash will actually leave more space for real trash when it goes to the landfill.
It also reduces methane gas at our dump site, which is a significant contributor to greenhouse gases. But recently, there has been an issue with our composting process. Trash. We've seen just about everything unloaded. This. This. And, oh, come on, guys. Making compost isn't complicated, but it is a long process. Grass and leaves are dumped into windrows. They're turned once or maybe twice a week. Which aerates the material, reducing the fermentation that actually causes methane gas. Eventually, Mother Nature produces her final product. But if that compost is littered with junk, it costs you money. Because trees, trash, and whatever else may lie in those rows has to be handpicked out.
That's not going to compost dump.
And is oftentimes missed, causing damage to equipment or littered compost soil. So save us the time and taxpayer money. Heed the warnings. Let this dumpster do its job for the community and only dump grass and leaves. Hey, Minot, 2020 is the year for more. Yes, it's the U.S. Census season, and with it, Minot could see more. More opportunities for business. More federal funding for roads, for our schools, and for our community. Take part in something more. Take the census, because for us, more means more. Visit minotnd.org to learn more. This dumpster has a very important role for our community. To extend the lifetime of our landfill and also limit methane gas from leaking into our air and into the community. But for that to happen, there's only one simple rule that needs to be followed. Dump only leaves and grass. This is why compost sites only take grass and leaves. When compost is dumped here, it's then brought here, and in just a few weeks, it will go here. A six-to-eight-week process to create clean, nutrient-rich, and free topsoil.
Now, separating this organic material from your household trash will actually leave more space for real trash when it goes to the landfill.
It also reduces methane gas at our dump site, which is a significant contributor to greenhouse gases. But recently, there has been an issue with our composting process. Trash. We've seen just about everything unloaded. This. This. And, oh, come on, guys. Making compost isn't complicated, but it is a long process. Grass and leaves are dumped into windrows. They're turned once or maybe twice a week. Which aerates the material, reducing the fermentation that actually causes methane gas. Eventually, Mother Nature produces her final product. But if that compost is littered with junk, it costs you money. Because trees, trash, and whatever else may lie in those rows has to be handpicked out.
That's not going to compost dump.
And is oftentimes missed, causing damage to equipment or littered compost soil. So save us the time and taxpayer money. Heed the warnings. Let this dumpster do its job for the community and only dump grass and leaves.
We'll call the meeting of the Minot City Council to order for this afternoon, Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. It is 5:30. I would ask for folks in the audience and at the dais to mute or put your electronic devices on vibrate so we can keep the distractions down to a minimum. Roll call, please.
Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Padrigula?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Sitma?
Here. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three on our agenda this afternoon is the mayor's report. Did have a number of meetings and other activities to outline for my report this afternoon. On August 4th, I did attend the Service Valley Animal Shelter groundbreaking. And also then on the 5th, sales closing for a home acquisition in the flood control. We did have an IEDC Steering Committee meeting on the 6th, as well as the Military Affairs Committee meeting. Again, by Zoom, we have had those Zoom meetings now for a number of months. We are certainly looking forward to a time when we can get back collectively with our folks from Minot Air Force Base and National Guard and the rest of the folks to resume those. On the 7th, then, I did meet with the 5th Bomb Wing Commander Colonel Michael Walters for a discussion between the collective communities, Minot Air Force Base and Minot. On the 10th, then, a Task Force 21 meeting and MADC board meeting on the 13th. The 17th was a regular council meeting, and then immigrant stakeholders' phone conference on the 21st. And I did emcee the Minot Food Truck Festival at Oak Park on the 23rd. We did have a 20, on the 27th, a special board meeting for MADC. I did also do a presentation for Sotoma Group that met at Oak Park on the 20th night. Then, was the Good Night Live Roast Downtown. A good number of people did attend that. Do want to say thank you to the folks that did their best on social distancing for a large event that was in our downtown area. On the 30th, then, was the 5th Bomb Wing Commander Open House up at Minot Air Force Base. A good number of folks from the Task Force 21 attended that. Also, social distancing is a continued cooperation for collaboration between Minot and the fine folks up at Minot Air Force Base. I did attend the Senator Hoven's invitation with the U.S. Energy Secretary on September 1st, as he was in town to talk with industry leaders. On the 1st, then, I also did help out with the census kiosk at Marketplace Foods and managed to get one person signed up in two hours. Did find a number of people had already signed up, which is great to see. However, I did come across another seven or eight people that absolutely did not want to take the census and said that they weren't going to. We will certainly talk more about that in a little bit. On the 2nd, I did have another flood home acquisition signing. The Magic City Equality Flag Raising on September 2nd. And on the 3rd, the CTE Committee Meeting and the Military Affairs Zoom Meeting on September 3rd again. And one last meeting was the NDLC Nominating Committee earlier today. I'm going to back up just for a moment for the one specific item here that we will talk about likely in greater detail later here. And that was the Magic City Equality Flag Raising. And that was in respect to the size of the flag. I did have a number of people that reached out to me regarding flag etiquette. And certainly, take full responsibility for the oversight of the size of the flag, as that was something that I absolutely should have checked on prior to raising. However, the issue was identified immediately. The flag was then lowered until the proper size of the flag was found. And that is under U.S. Code Title Section 4, Section 7, underline G and F. So further discussion on that will come up during the number nine on our agenda, under personal appearances or under other discussion later on in our meeting. With that, I would take any other questions from my meetings and appointments for the month.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Will you be meeting with the new commander of the 91st Missile Wing as well?
That is a hope.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the commander has not had coronavirus, has been under the weather a little bit.
Okay.
So we are working on trying to pair those schedules up. However, they did move to a higher level of their COVID response. And right now, given the 91st's specific mission, they are limiting a little bit of access there. So that meeting is coming. It's just trying to find the right time to get that done.
Thank you.
Yes. That takes us to number four, which is the city manager's report. And I think, Derek, you can, there you go, move from there. Our acting city manager, Mr. David Lakefield, has his report in just a moment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have a lot of important business on the agenda this evening, so we'll keep this brief and move things right along. Some important dates coming up. Chamber Board Meeting, 7:30 a.m. on the 15th. Also, the Lega City's virtual annual business meeting that day. Magic Fund Meeting, 7:30 a.m. in council chambers on the 18th. And we do anticipate at least one application coming through, so we will have that meeting. City Council Meeting, the next council meeting is September 21st, again here at 5:30 in the council chambers. The Chamber Annual Meeting on the 23rd at 11:30 a.m. at the Grand Hotel. And then the Lega City's Annual Meeting on the 24th through the 26th. And this year, that conference will be held virtually instead of being hosted in Bismarck. October 1st, we have the Service River Joint Board Meeting, monthly meeting at 4 o'clock, again via teleconference. And the first meeting in October for the council at 5:30 on the 5th. Just some brief project updates to keep everyone up to date where we're at. We have a lot going on in town. We'll start with ANDR projects. Blue on Broadway, if you've driven down Broadway, they've made some progress. The precast concrete beams are in place. And the decking, the precast concrete decking for the flooring is mostly in place. They're definitely making some progress there. The TIF portion of that project, which is the streets and utility improvements on First Street to the back of this project, is also underway. And they're making some significant progress there. And the next portion, of course, is some steel. And once they're out of the ground like this, we'll see the progress will be a lot more apparent. City Hall and the CTE, City Hall status, we're in preparation, we're just finishing up or waiting for the appraisal to be complete. We're anticipating that next week. So fall goes according to schedule, we'll be preparing an offer and beginning negotiations next week. The CTE, Center for Technical Education, that project is underway. We're in negotiations to acquire the property. The HUD release of funds is anticipated coming up. And the environmental review was approved, will be brought for approval later this month. Some construction projects. This is an aerial shot of the roundabout with grass in the middle of it. It looks pretty nice. The construction moved further west on 31st Avenue. They finished a 2,700-foot pore of concrete last week, so it's really starting to take shape. This week, they're working on curb and gutter. Soon, they'll move the traffic off the temporary path and onto the newly constructed road. And then they'll start work on the sidewalks, the walking path and the street lighting in anticipation of finishing up that portion of the project. Then they'll switch gears and move towards the section further west from Second Street to Broadway and work on that second phase of that project. They're hoping all of the paving portion will be done by the end of the month, so it's moving right along and completion later on in the fall here. 10th Avenue Southeast, this project has been a little bit more challenging. The intersection at 10th Street and 31st Avenue is now open. 31st Avenue to 37th Avenue on 10th Street is still closed. The storm sewer install is complete on 10th Street. The roads are in the process of being built up. And the final portion of work is to begin today, installing storms sewer west on 32nd and 34th Avenue. It remains a little bit behind schedule, but still expected to be complete by the end of October. Flood Control, this first picture on the bottom left here shows the staining on the dry side of the flood control wall with the brick veneer. This is actually precast panels that then are later stained after they're put up. This makes it look a little bit nicer and less institutional, but it also has a coating on there that is graffiti resistant that helps us clean the graffiti off when that happens. So two purposes to putting this staining on the wall, too. On the Broadway Pump Station, they're working on the brick veneer. And the generator's on site, just waiting to be hooked up. And they're working on pavement on Fourth Avenue east of Broadway, and that's nearly complete as well. MI 23 is just about complete. The WeLink parking lot is done. The closure structure is complete, except for the staining portion of the concrete. And they're working on finishing up the landscape, seating, trees, shrubs, all the greenery and punch list items. So hopefully, you finish up here later in the month. Census progress, we're at 67% currently. National response rate, 65.3, and the state response rate is a little bit less than that. So thanks to everyone's hard work, manning the kiosks and all the access points. And Brian Billingsley for leading that effort. We're at least trending slightly above average nationally and within the state as well. And one of the last slides here, just a brief finance update. At the end of August, our general fund revenue is tracking slightly above where we'd anticipate, according to our budget this time of year. And the good news is, general fund expenses are about 5% below budget. So revenue is a little bit higher than we budgeted, and expenses are down a little bit. So that means that we're optimistic that we're going to have some budget savings there for 2020, and we continue to monitor that. We talked a little bit at the last meeting about our sales tax revenues, and we're tracking right at our budget level. We're actually 0.18% above budget year-to-date, so that's pretty close. So as long as the trend holds, and again, I throw this graph out there because it's difficult to predict a trend line based on this graph. So we're optimistic that things will continue strong through the fourth quarter of the year, and hopefully, we'll at least be at budget. Just a couple of other things that I don't have a slide on. Our Jarvis project, which is our software upgrade, is continuing. It's consuming a lot of time and resources. We're beginning end-user training starting tomorrow, so this is kind of the home stretch for this. Our anticipated go-live date is October 1st for financials. And we have a lot of apprehension around that. We still have a lot of work to do. So people are getting a little nervous, so we're keeping very busy with that. But we're optimistic that we're going to get that project underway. Big event tomorrow, our bond sale that we've talked about the last couple of meetings. We're actually closing on those bonds tomorrow, so that'll wrap that up. And then I'm going to tease this a little bit, and there'll be more information coming. But our Problem Property Unit has come up with a plan or an idea that they're working on. And we talked about this at our department head meeting last week, and it's gaining a little bit of steam. So we have a group that's putting some information together, so I'm just going to tease this a little bit and keep you in a little bit of suspense. But it's a citywide initiative that they'll be bringing some more information here in the next few weeks to present to the council members. And then hopefully, get this out to the public in the near future here. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lakefield. Any questions for acting city manager? Thank you, sir. Next is our city attorney's report. And before I bring Kelly up here, I do want to make mention is we do have a little extra police presence here tonight, and this falls under the realm of legal. There was a threat made prior to council meeting, both to the Equality Group that was a bit ambiguous, so we do have extra police presence here tonight. And just so the folks know, sitting in here, we did have the K-9 unit sweep the chambers and the rest of the building prior to this evening's meeting. City Attorney Report, Ms. Anderschut.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I submitted a written report. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for our city attorney?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Again, that report can be found online attached to item number six, or I'm sorry, item number five. Item number six is Consider the Report of the Planning Commission. We did have two different items on there. The first one, 6.1, is a public hearing, the subdivision and rezoning Riverwood Second Edition Lot 1. The public hearing to consider a request by Ron and Carrie Thunshell, applicant and applicants, and David Kopp, owner, to create a new subdivision from the unplanted portion of southwest corridor, northwest corridor of Section 21155 North, 83 West, to be known as Riverwood Second Edition Lot 1, and to rezone the new lot from AG, which is Agricultural District, to RA, Agricultural Residential District. The two recommendations before us is that the city council approve the subdivision of Riverwood Second Edition Lot 1 and 2, pass the ordinance on first reading to rezone the new lot from AG to RA. Again, this is a public hearing for anyone to come forward and speak on this item, either in favor or opposed. One more call for any comments for the public hearing on the item that is displayed on the screen. Seeing none, I would look for a motion. Alderman Janser.
Mr. Mayor, I move we close the public hearing and approve the item.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Janser to close the public hearing and to approve the item with recommendations. Second by Alderman Pittner. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 6.2 is the subdivision, Second Edition Lots 1 and 2. The recommendation of the city council is to create a new subdivision to be known as Tita, Second Edition Lots 1 and 2.
So move.
Motion by Alderman Janser to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Pittner. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Number seven is our consent agenda items. We do have 18 different items that are attached. I've been asked to pull 7.3, number six within that. And for folks wondering, that is to amend the CMCO Chapter 5 Movie Theater License Ordinance. Are there any other items that need to be pulled for individual discussion on the consent? Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderman Olson to approve all items except for 7.36. Second by Alderman?
Second.
Pittner? Discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 7.3, number six, is Ordinance 5525, amending of the CMCO Chapter 5 Movie Theater License. That is attached to PDF number 5525.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderman Olson for approval. Second by Alderwoman Evans. Alderwoman Olson, you asked for this to be pulled.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, if I'm making the motion to approve it, I am going to vote in favor of it. But after first reading, after I'd made comment, I did receive emails, and so I just wanted to reiterate my preference. I think it's the preference of a lot of people, is that movie theaters consider it maybe a family time, some set-aside time where alcohol is not served. Perhaps it's G-rated movies. However, it would best be addressed, and I would certainly, I would recommend that customers of the movie theaters talk to the management at the movie theaters and make these requests known. But I did hear from several people just saying that they hoped that there would be times that alcohol would not be served at the movie theaters.
Alderman Padrigula.
In connection with that, I wanted to ask our city attorney to give a little bit more background about a part of the proposed ordinance. I also received input from people, and I'm not terribly keen on this change. One of the suggestions that people made is that perhaps we limit the sale of alcohol to a certain part of a theater. And that's where I wanted our attorney to explain why that's a little bit more complicated, or actually, a lot more complicated than it first seems.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Padrigula, the city council could add additional restrictions to this type of license if it chose to do that. The reason that it's written as it's written is because it's as consistent with the Supper Club license as we could make it, which is, I thought, the direction that the city council wanted this to go. We also included some additional restrictions in this license. One example of that is that you can only order one drink at a time, and that's for a couple of reasons. One is to ensure that the person that's purchasing the alcohol and then consuming it is of age to do that. And the second is also to ensure that there's some restriction on sharing of alcohol. If there's only one drink, the chances of alcohol being shared with people under the age of 21 is less likely. There are additional things within the ordinances generally that allow the police department to do compliance checks, and that's with any license holder. So the police department does have the authority to go onto the licensed premises and to do checks, regardless of the fact that this is a movie theater. And it's a little different situation than most of our licensed premises. So those are some of the additional restrictions that we put in here. But overall, the overarching license that we tried to mimic with this was the Supper Club license, which does also make that consistent with state law, where there is a requirement for people under the age of 21 to not be on licensed premises unless it falls under a certain exception, which would be a restaurant. So if that answers the question.
Continue, Alderman Padrigula.
It does. There's also a further aspect to this, and that's several years ago, there was a move to broaden this up a little bit. And if you create a separate area for consumption of alcohol, then it starts moving in the direction of being a bar. And people who own bars, people who frequent bars, aren't real keen on that for obvious reasons. And that was an issue.
And if you create a separate area for consumption of alcohol, then it starts moving in the direction of being a bar. And people who own bars, people who frequent bars aren't real keen on that for obvious reasons. And that was an issue some years ago when the ordinance was changed to allow more flexibility for supper clubs. And I wanted to thank our city attorney for bringing my attention to that. I was not on the council at that point, but I remember it being talked about. So unfortunately, if you want to limit the places where alcohol can be consumed in the theater, you may be running into further complications. And I'm also pleased that, I read this, but it just didn't register. I'm also pleased that the serving of alcohol or purchase of alcohol is limited to one beverage per person. So I think that'll help avoid any kind of inappropriate underage use. Police are always at any time able to do a spot check to see if anything's going on. So I, I think there are some safeguards in place there. I'm not quite positive which way I'm going to vote today, but it's something that's been thought through very carefully and thoroughly and planned out by the city attorney and the police chief. And I think Lisa has a good point, and she suggests patrons should talk with their establishments about things like that. And I think a family hour where alcohol isn't served or family portion of a day is a very reasonable thing. I think it's also reasonable for some owners to market their establishments based on that. Either, you know, come and enjoy a drink with your favorite movie, or come and don't have to worry about a drink with your favorite movie. So I, I think this is a compromise, and it dates earlier even than I had anticipated. So I really appreciate the guidance, Kelly, and I hope that'll help people feel more comfortable about whichever way the vote goes.
Any further questions? Alderwoman Evans?
Oh, I don't have a question for, can we comment?
Yes.
So I will be voting for this ordinance. I think, you know, one of council's roles is to be nimble and flexible with businesses in the community, and we have an industry that is changing and adapting to new desires of customers in movie theaters. So I'm glad to be able to vote for this. Again, we will have control over the license. I think you'll see in item 8, when we're discussing specifically the granting of the license to the establishment that's asked for it. You know, we, we will have the ability to go establishment by establishment to grant those licenses and see if we are comfortable with that establishment having taken the, the processes and procedures thoughtfully under consideration on how they're going to use and implement that license. So this is the ordinance, you know, that will allow those establishments to ask for licenses, and hopefully, you know, we can have that discussion with each establishment as they ask for licenses. So I will be voting for this measure.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I can, I appreciate the work that's been done into this ordinance change, and I, and I'll support it tonight. This is, some of these grievances that I hear are between the business owner and the patrons. If you don't like the way the business is run, I mean, I can go to Applebee's and have a beer with my kids. I can go to Qdoba on Broadway and have a beer with my kids. We have to be responsible adults. They have to be responsible business owners. They have to be stewards of their license. This is their responsibility to accommodate the people that will patronize their business. Again, I, I'm excited about this ordinance change because it, it allows for the flexibility. We live in a free market economy that they have this right to serve who they want, and, patrons will let their voice be heard with their dollars. Those are their votes. And if they want to patronize a business, they can vote for them by, by going there and spending their money. And they're going to do their best job to maintain their licenses and make sure that the rules are followed. Again, we hold the license. So I, I really don't have many reservations about this. I'm excited for this change. I appreciate all the work and the collaboration that's gone into making it a reality. And I don't know when the last time any of you were to a movie with a bunch of screaming five-year-old girls dressed up like Elsa, but if I take my wife to a movie Frozen 5 at some point, I, I might need a drink. So again, I'll support this measure.
Any further discussion? Alderman Padraigula?
Yeah, I'm listening avidly to my brothers and sisters on the council. I probably will support it. But, you know, I'll be honest with you, I'm not really keen about, you know, the spread of alcohol and other mood-altering substances. You know, it's not a great thing, and people tend to get rowdy and act stupid. But, you know, it is something that's shared in our culture. I don't want to be a puritan or prudite on this issue. And I think the issue also of economics is a significant one. I mean, there have been marked changes in the entertainment industry, and movies are having a very tough time of it, movie theaters. One of my favorite establishments in Minot, Videomagic, a video rental store, just closed after, what, 20, 30 years? We were one of their early customers. And that really, really impacts on the kind of entertainment that my family and I can participate in. And if selling a beer or a glass of wine helps keep a place in business so kids can come watch their Elsa movies, or adults can watch their whatever movies, I think that's, that's probably what's going to influence me to vote in favor of it. And I'm confident in our police department and them enforcing, you know, laws and ordinances against rowdiness. And certainly, hopefully, the owners of establishments will be very sensitive to their patrons and try to be respectful of people. To me, it initially seemed that having a special area was the way to go, but Kelly earlier today kind of gave me the perspective that that really wouldn't solve any problems and make them worse, actually. So unbalanced, I think I'll probably be supporting this and just encourage people to act responsibly and to make their feelings known.
Further discussion on the motion to approve? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to the action items. Action item 8.1 is the movie theater license. The American Multicinema Incorporated doing business as AMC Dakota Square. The city received a request from AMC Dakota Square 9 for a supper club license operating at 2400 10th Street Southwest, Suite 604. After discussion between the city attorney, police chief, and the city council, it was decided that the better option would be to amend the code of ordinances and to add a definition for a movie theater license, which better represents the business. Ordinance 5525 passed on second reading earlier this evening for city council. The movie theater license for AMC Dakota Square 9 can now move forward for either approval or for being rejected. The recommendation for the city council is to approve the, the request for the American Multicinema Inc. doing businesses AMC Dakota Square 9 for a movie theater license operating at 2400 10th Street Southwest, Suite 604, subject to the passing ordinance, again, of 5525 on second reading, which just passed.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Alderman Pittner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Ross. Discussion on the motion. Alderwoman Evans.
I, I believe Mr. Jensen, the manager at AMC, of AMC is here. I was wondering if he could come up and take a few questions.
Good evening, sir. If you would just identify yourself with the microphone, and then we'll ask a few questions.
Sure. My name is Kevin Jensen. I'm the general manager of the AMC Dakota Square 9.
Good evening, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you for coming up. I just wanted to, you know, walk through sort of some of the policies and procedures and the way AMC, you know, sort of feel, is going to implement this license if it's approved.
Okay.
So first off, do you, you're not from Minot. You came from another area.
Detroit, yes.
And can you tell us about your experience with other movie theaters, and if you've had experience with those establishments serving alcohol?
Yes, for the past four years, I've worked for AMC, three of which I've worked at theaters that served alcohol, very similar to the proposed license here. The bar is completely separate from all other operations of the theater. The only people that are allowed behind the bar, which is represented by a literal swing gate, are those over the age of 21 that have been certified to serve alcohol. Regarding gaining certification to serve alcohol, every member of the management team, as well as bartenders we actually hire and train, would need to be subjected to state requirements for alcohol serving, just like any other bartender, any other establishment. Each state is different. We're looking into what exactly the state would require once we have the license to hire bartenders. Movie theaters are also, or AMC, rather, is requiring all people that are going to be serving alcohol to take three online-based classes. All of our AMC Learning Studio courses are online, and we have three that are called Responsible Service of Alcohol 101, 201, and 301. And managers are required to take each of those courses as well, because it is expected that, you know, if the bar were to become busy and the bartender couldn't quite keep up with the demand, that we would be able to serve alcohol, you know, collect tips for them, and just, just help them out. So we don't want them to be alone. But as I said before, only the folks that are of age will be allowed to take those courses. And only those of age would be allowed to become a bartender. There is no serving, so we wouldn't have to worry about any 18-year-olds, 19-year-olds, 20-year-olds serving the alcohol, because it is delivered directly to the guest at the bar inside of our lobby.
So walk me through, like, how Minot, so pretend I'm coming into Minot's AMC, and I want to have a beer with my, my movie. Tell me what happens.
Well, we would, we would card you. Everyone that visits AMC and requests an alcoholic drink gets carded. It doesn't matter the frequency. You could literally come in every day, and we would still ask for ID every single time. We would ask what you'd have. We would provide the drink upon confirmation that you were indeed old enough. With the drink, we would also provide a wristband, kind of like you get at the fair. They are different colors. Some theaters do it a little differently, but we are going to be doing one color for one drink, two colors for two drinks, which is AMC's maximum, one drink at a time. But if they wanted another one, if they're watching a three-hour movie, they might want another beverage, and they would be able to do that as long as they got the second-colored wristband. So, so that's basically it. I mean, it's a very open and shut kind of process. You come in, you order your drink, you get carded, you get your drink, you get your wristband, and you're on your way.
Like the bottle or can of beer? How does that work?
Well, if you, if you were to order a, we've got beer on tap, and we were going to have beer in bottles as well. We do not provide glass bottles to the guests. We provide it in just a cup, like you'd get a tap beer in.
Okay.
And wine as well. It's provided in different glasses or cups than the beer, but it's all plastic cups all the way across.
So do they look the same as, like, if, if my nephew's getting, like, a pop? Like, is it in a container?
No. No, the, there's a couple differences between the beverage drink cups, the soft drinks that you get, like the Coca-Cola drinks that we serve from the concession stand. Those are served out of paper cups. The bar alcoholic beverage cups are served out of plastic. The beer cups and the wine cups vary slightly. However, it's, it says on them, like, exactly kind of what they're drinking. Like, if it's a beer, it has beer-related words. If it's wine, it has wine-related words. They're also noticeably different in size when compared to the soft drink cups we sell as well. We have two sizes of soft drink. It's a 30-ounce and a 44-ounce cup. The beer cups are 24 ounces is the maximum, and the, the wine cups are anywhere from 6 to 10 ounces, depending on the size you ordered. So there's vastly different sizes available, so it's easily, easily identifiable in the theater.
And then after I come get that second beer, you take that second-colored wristband off?
We would, well, you can, we would leave it on, and then you could take it off as soon as you left, as soon as you left the establishment. Because we do theater checks anyway for sight and sound presentation, that sort of stuff, we're just going to be adding the alcohol compliance checks to our theater checks that we already do. And basically, what that'll involve, an associate, could be anyone, an usher, for example, walks into a theater, just does a quick pan of the audience, make sure that nobody is sharing alcohol, and anybody that is indeed consuming alcohol or has one in their cup holder has an armband on their, on their wrist. And if they don't, then they'd be asked to show their ID to provide they were indeed old enough.
So would the usher do that, or would the usher come?
The usher would do that.
Oh, you?
Yeah, if, if there was an issue, the usher would involve management. But just for theater checks, we, we, an usher can perform those tasks.
And then would there be a point that you, what would be the threshold where you'd, you feel like you would have to bring in Minot PD if there was a problem?
There would be a few circumstances where we would want to involve law enforcement. Those circumstances, number one, if a minor is found to be consuming alcohol, so if they don't have a wristband when they're consuming alcohol, that's when we would instigate an ID check. And if indeed it was determined that somebody was consuming alcohol that was not old enough, then the police would be called, and they'd be removed for, you know, underage drinking in public. That quite simply violates our policies, our procedures, and that just wouldn't be tolerated. If it is determined that somebody shared that alcohol with someone, like if they're with someone, let's say a guy brings his 19-year-old girlfriend to see a movie, he's old enough, she isn't, they would both be asked to leave, leave the establishment. Also, I would like to add, I do have minors working at the theater. It's pretty common, first job, second job kind of thing, while people are going through college or high school. We do not allow our ushers that are under the age of 21 to clean theaters, or clean, I guess, areas of the theater that had alcohol. So someone would have to be over the age of 21 to clean up, you know, leftover alcohol cups or anything related to the bar. They can sweep up the popcorn and that sort of stuff, but anything relating to alcohol, someone over the age of 21 has to deal with at all times, and that's, includes cleaning. So I just wanted to put that out there, that yes, I do have minors working, and no, they will not be exposed to it at all.
So did you, your experience in Michigan with theaters that had this, what, were they mostly good? Did you ever have?
I can say with absolute certainty that I have never once encountered an issue in my almost four years working in theaters with bars, with the bar. I've had people get upset about being carded, you know, because they're regulars. We see them probably two, three times a week. They get carded every single time. They get upset about that. I have never once encountered an issue with a minor consuming alcohol from our bar. I have never once encountered an issue with a bartender selling a drink to a minor, nor have I encountered an issue in the auditorium, which, you know, involved police being called or even management being called to, to deal with the situation. It's honestly never been an issue for me. However, the procedures are in place to deal with those situations should they occur.
Right. And it's AMC nationally, the policy, the two-drink policy?
Correct, yes. So it's, the.
It's not a Minot-specific.
City of Minot has determined that one drink at a time is appropriate, and we're totally in support of that. However, two drinks per visit is AMC's, you know, AMC's policy. So we would just enforce that if they wanted more than one.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. That's all the questions I have.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Jensen, I don't have a question, but I would also just make the recommendation for a district health unit is probably one of the places that you would want to check for the responsible drinking, serving classes.
I've been in touch, yes. I've been in touch with the health inspector, yeah.
Any other questions or further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the movie theater license outlined on the screen. For the details, please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 8.2 is the approved salvage agreement with the, with Ted Mertz for, for an oil tank. As part of the flood buyout involuntary acquisition program, the city acquired 205 14th Street Northeast, which has had, which had housed Beam Oil. As part of the purchase agreement, the seller had been given the opportunity to relocate an approximately 250,000-gallon oil tank on the site, as well as several other movable pieces of equipment. The seller missed the deadline set for the purchase agreement to remove the salvageable items, and as a result, the seller forfeited the right to these items. an oil tank and oil in the tank on the property acquired by the city under the flood buyout program located at 215 14th Street Northeast in Minot.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderman Olson to approve. Is there a second? Second by Alderwoman Evans. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 8.3 is the engineering amendment for sundry water line and booster station and reservoir. This is Project 4195.1. As the city and the SRG progress with the design on the first three phases of the flood protection, it has become apparent that a large portion of the existing fiberglass sundry water line that brings water from the sundry well field southeast of Minot to the water plant will need to be relocated for flood protection. This amendment is for the final field construction engineering services and closeout documentation for the booster station and reservoir. The two recommendations before us are to approve the construction engineering amendment with Houston Engineering for not to exceed the amount of $9,026, and two authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Pittner to approve. Second by Alderman Janser. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 8.4, Amendment for Construction Engineering Project 3135.2D, SWIFT repair of deficient culverts. Design and construction engineering for the repair or replacement of culvert deficiencies, gate well corrections, and other deficiencies found that require attention in accordance with the, with US ACA requirements for improvements on existing levee systems. This amendment is to cover the additional construction engineering and testing that is needed to close out the SWIFT D portion of the levee repair project to the existing flood protection system. Three recommendations before us are the approval of the construction engineering contract amendment with Houston Engineering for SWIFT D for not to exceed the amount of $98,000, two authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city, and three place and pass an ordinance on first reading, increasing the sales tax flood control expenditures on the SWIFT project for the engineering amendment.
So moved.
Motion by Alderwoman Olson for approval. Second by Alderman Pittner. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 8.5, An Engineering Contract Amendment from Storm Sewer District 123. This is item 4393. Storm Sewer District 123 on 10th Street Southwest is currently under construction. As the project has developed, changes have occurred that are out of the original scope of work and project assumptions made. Staff has reviewed the engineering contract amendment request and feels the hours and fees being requested are fair and justified. The recommendation to the council is to approve the contract amendment with Ackerman S. Fold and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. The attached contract amendment is also available for viewing both on the website or actually just on the website or by clicking it on your phone. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Alderman Olson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Evans. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 8.6 is a public hearing. This is regarding the 2020 Renaissance Zone map amendment. The Minot Renaissance Zone is eligible to contain up to 42 blocks of land. The city currently has 23 active blocks in the Renaissance Zone, consisting of 21 full blocks and four government half blocks. The city of Minot is eligible to add up to 19 blocks to the Minot Renaissance Zone. The Renaissance Review Board recommends that the city incorporate the 18 blocks highlighted in red on the attached map and hold on the pointing a 19th block until the board has a clear direction on where they would like to expand the Renaissance Zone. Recommendation to the council is to add blocks 1D through 18D to the Minot Renaissance Zone for new development and rehabilitation purposes. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Is it a public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearing. Thank you for the correction. This is a public hearing for those to come and speak in favor or opposition to adding those blocks that are outlined on the map to the Renaissance Zone. Again, one more time, this is a public hearing for anyone, anyone to come and speak in favor or opposed to adding the blocks to the Renaissance Zone that are outlined on the map. If now I would, if not, I would now look for a motion. Alderman Pittner?
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and approve the item.
Motion to close the public hearing and approve the item by Alderman Pittner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Janser. Discussion. Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. I sit on the, as the liaison for the Renaissance Review Board, and I'd like to commend that board for all their hard work and discussion and real critical thinking on where to add these blocks. These blocks can be a real game changer for development and redevelopment of businesses and property in these highlighted areas, and I think it's, it's a great tool for businesses that are located in this map to do some of these projects, and it would be in their best interest of, interest to reach out to city officials, Brian Billingsley, anyone that has knowledge of this program to really take advantage of this. Again, I commend all their hard work on moving this forward, and there's a great deal of opportunity in the downtown, and this can be, this tool can be a game changer for any of those projects. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Pittner. Any further discussion? Also taking a look at an earlier iteration on how that kind of evolved over the progress of discussion, I want to say thank you to both staff and to Alderman Pittner and the rest of the folks on that committee to really lining this in to see where it was most needed, and I think identifying the next pieces or components for redevelopment or reinvestment within the community. I think it's going to, it will be a great asset. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to 8.7, the public hearing on the proposed 2021 budget. Before we get into the public hearing, I would look to our council president, Alderwoman Olson, for her 2020 budget letter regarding 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August 26th, I did submit a letter to you and to all of my fellow council members, and it was also shared with the media at that time. But if you'd allow me just a minute or two to read the letter for our audience that are here in person and those that are listening at home. Dear Mayor Sitma and fellow Minot City Council members, as I begin this letter, I have to reflect on events in 2020 that have impacted our community. First and foremost, our city, county, state, country, and world are feeling the effects of a global pandemic. 12 months ago, as we met to discuss a budget, we never could have imagined how a virus would change everything. Healthcare, public safety, commerce, and education have all seen dramatic changes this year. Financial outlooks have been cloudy at best, so this body, along with city staff, have made some difficult decisions to keep expenditures at a manageable level. I believe this approach is similar to what many of our residents are practicing in their own homes and businesses. Traditional events such as the North Dakota State Fair and the North Coast Fest were canceled in 2020, which caused or will cause a loss of revenue for area businesses. But the magic within our city rallied together to create smaller opportunities for people to gather and enjoy food and entertainment. Along with the pandemic, we have seen racial unrest in many parts of the country. Those situations hit close to home with many of our residents. But I am proud to say that Minot's approach has been peaceful and effective. Collaboration between the city of Minot and our community have produced open dialogue and resolution on various points. We are keenly aware that this communication must continue into 2021. It becomes easy to focus on the negatives, but we must pivot and realize that there are many positive things occurring in Minot. A collaborative venture between Visit Minot, Minot Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Minot Area Development Corporation unveiled a cohesive brand effort called "It's Magic in Minot." The colorful new logo can be seen around town. Fundraising events continued for projects such as the Magic City Discovery Center and Minot State University Summer Theater, which will bring new and improved experiences for our citizens to enjoy. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the integrated support for the 2020 census. Individuals, groups, and organizations have assisted in promoting and providing census kiosks for our community because they all agree that more means more. Earlier this year, we provided guidance to city staff to develop a proposed 2021 budget that would continue quality municipal services to our citizens while holding the line on taxes. As stewards of our community's resources, we are tasked with the responsibility of now reviewing the budget and adopting a budget that follows our earlier guidance. As outlined in Mr. Lakefield's letter to us, the mill levy for 2021 is proposed at 121.29, which mirrors the proposed 2020 mill levy. Capital improvement projects include continued flood control projects, NOS, City Hall, and the Northwest Fire Station, and the City Hall retaining wall. It is important to note that the flood control projects and City Hall both benefit from additional funding sources. Another key consideration is that this body has previously discussed and approved all of these, either in concept or reality. City staff has taken a prudent approach to funding the Northwest Fire Station and the City Hall retaining wall by allowing for partial funding in 2021 with the hope that one could be fully funded if revenues improve. While I support this concept, I am aware that many residents in Northwest Minot have been patiently waiting for a neighborhood fire station that will better serve the potential, their potential safety needs. I encourage city staff to bring updates to the city council in 2021, which may allow for full funding of the Northwest Fire Station, including the costs of equipment and personnel. While making difficult choices is part of our responsibility, I would not support the reallocation of funds earmarked for the City Hall retaining wall because I believe that it too is needed and long overdue. I have previously voiced my approval for the acquisition of a downtown property which could house a new city hall. Combining local funds along with NDR dollars, we can accomplish the goal of providing needed space for City Hall, moving the 911 dispatch center out of floods' way, and helping to revitalize our downtown. I anxiously await more details on this endeavor. The 2021 budget allows for improved street maintenance, which had been previously discussed by the city council. I applaud city staff for finding ways to make this happen. Our city employees provide needed municipal services that our residents expect and deserve. Although grade classifications will remain the same due to insufficient pay classification survey data, our employees will receive their anniversary date increases as per the current plan. I am confident in saying that we are all thankful for the work that they have done and will continue to do. It is my recommendation that no matter the economic situation in 2021, that pay classification survey is completed and considered for the 2022 pay plan. Historically, we have seen the negative effects of employee turnover due to perceived insufficient pay and benefit plan. With a low 3.57% turnover rate, we want to continue to work with our employees so that they can ultimately provide quality municipal services to our residents. Three additional staff positions have been requested by various departments. Department directors have provided sound rationale for the request, so I recommend that we approve the positions of Police Department Intelligence Analyst, Public Works Project Manager, and Fire Department Fire Inspector, moving from part-time to full-time. As we move into the first and second reading on the proposed 2021 budget, I encourage discussion and debate among the council and from the citizens of Minot. Great projects with great results are always obtained through intelligent and compassionate collaboration. It should be our goal to work together with our citizens, our stakeholders, and our fellow elected officials to provide an excellent way of life for everyone in the Magic City. Thank you for your service and your support to the city of Minot.
Thank you, Alderwoman Olson. This, again, is a, this is a public hearing for the first reading of the budget. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward and speak on any item regarding our budget in favor or in opposition, either to the entire thing or any line item that they may have a question on. This is that time to come forward and just state your name and your address for the record and the item for the budget that you wish to discuss.
Cindy Sessions, 800 Harmony Street Northwest. I just have a question on the Northwest Fire Station. With all of the additional homes and apartments, all of the additional buildings and maybe new annexations, what is or was or is the fire chief's recommendation for delaying the building of that fire station? I'm just wondering if for safety issues, for response times for all of the new buildings, et cetera, that it's probably not a good, maybe not a good idea to delay, you know? I think, do I understand it correctly that only half of it is funded for 2021?
Ms. Sessions, yes. The proposal before us is to fund half of it this year, half of it next year. If sales tax revenues do come in higher than I would say a very conservative projection, we would have that option to fund it if more money comes in through sales tax in that given year. Of course, our, I don't believe our fire chief is here tonight. She had a family emergency and couldn't be with us this evening. But previous discussions, obviously, is a recommendation to not only reduce the response time for fires but for medical emergencies, because the fire department does respond to all medical emergencies, as many folks have witnessed themselves. I have, myself have witnessed that before. I can tell you that right now, the city of Minot is an ISO 2 rating. That is the second-best rating that you can get for fire response time in the state of North Dakota. An ISO 1 is essentially the only next-best rating that you can have. Previously, before adding fire station number four, we were an ISO 4. We've actually been bumping up, even with the addition of those houses in Northwest Minot. The chief and with the help of the city manager, previous city manager, current acting city manager have been working on some different staffing principles that I think are going to allow the addition of that fire station, hopefully either this coming year or the following year, with less impact to the budget than was previously, I think, experienced when we brought fire station number four on. And I don't remember off the top of my head on how many FTEs we had to add at that time, full-time employees, but it was quite a bit. But that is the hope that we can actually get this built, seeing as that's not only my area for fire protection but the rest of the community. But to say that we are much farther ahead than we were even four or five years ago when it came to response time. So we all recognize that as a priority and something that we're working to, which is also why Alderwoman Olson and the rest of us put an emphasis on not just picking one or the other, but partially funding both so that we have a plan and that it doesn't get kicked down the road. I would look to our finance director, acting city manager, Mr. Lakefield, for more on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, it was not the fire chief's wishes to delay the purchase, or the building of the Northwest Fire Station. That was a result of economics and economic uncertainty that became apparent at the beginning of the COVID pandemic. The original funding source for this project was, a significant part of it was Hub City funding, which is dependent on oil tax revenues. And with the way the oil tax revenues were earlier in the year, that funding source was not a stable funding source. So we were concerned about beginning this project and not having the funding to complete it. So that's why it was pulled as a project, along with the City Hall retaining wall, early in the city's response to the pandemic. And we brought that back in part with this budget. And again, the thought process was, when we get into 2021, we'll have a better idea how the recovery will look and how long that recovery will take. And again, the concern is, we don't want to get started on a project and then not have enough funding to complete the project.
Well, I'm just up here. I know it was delayed already once, and then to hear that it's only half-funded in 2021 with, you know, the enormous amount of construction, new homes, new apartments that are in the Northwest area. So my concern is just public safety, and of course, the coordination with the fire chief. Wondering what, you know, her views are on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other folks who want to come forward to speak on the budget? Last call for discussion on the 2021 budget. If not, I would look for a motion from the council. Alderman Pittner?
Mayor, I move we close the public hearing and approve the adoption of the 2021 budget.
We have a motion to close the public hearing and pass the adoption on first reading for the 2021 budget. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Ross. Discussion from the council. Alderman Pittner?
Just want to piggyback off of Ms. Sessions who came up here and just to the point that two of the big projects that we had to partially fund for next year, we as a community, little plug for shopping local, we as a community have the power to move those projects forward by, with keeping our dollars local, shopping locally, making sure our sales tax stays within the city of Minot. So if we get out and we patronize local businesses and whatnot, we could see maybe an acceleration to some of those projects, so.
Further discussion on the motion to approve? I would just take the opportunity as well to take a look at the 2021 budget in its entirety for $143,513,654. That is the proposed budget that is before us. For an idea of the property tax that is taken in for proportionate, the entire budget for property tax amounts to $25,781,496 of that $143.51 million. So... So for a lot of folks, that's kind of tough to wrap your head around at times. That equates to a tremendous amount of savings through the years that we as a community have had to do for flood control and also those federal and state dollars for flood control, NDR, NOS, and other major infrastructure projects that have been ongoing not only this year, but last year, and some of those projects well into the future. And other takeaways for the folks both here and listening at home is in previous, the previous year, we had budgeted for about $10 million per penny of sales tax. $10 million for the first penny, $10 million for the second. This year, conservatively, again, as our finance acting city manager pointed out, not really sure on what to expect with COVID impact or what all implications will be coming out of. A lot of uncertainty is that this budget is also accounting for only eight and a half million dollars out of each one of those pennies. So conservative estimates going back to the fire station, going back to other projects, that if numbers look better as we get past that first quarter and maybe second quarter of 2021, we may be able to make some of those adjustments and be a little more nimble to address those those major infrastructure projects that do have a significant safety issue at the heart of them. So. Any further discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to number nine. This is for personal appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward and speak on any item that is either on or not on our agenda. I would ask for anyone coming forward that you state your name and your address for the record. And we do have five minutes slotted for individuals. And if you do approach that five minutes, I will give you notice that your time is coming to an end. Would ask that also, as I have said before, civility is paramount and that we hope that everyone that does come forward with whatever subject that they choose to speak on And if you could pull the microphone down so we can hear you and the folks at home can hear you.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Danita Magnuson, and I live on Academy Road in Minot. I want to thank you for allowing me to address our city council this evening. I'm here because I want to make sure that our mayor hears my opinion regarding raising the LGBTQ flag at our city hall. I called City Hall to voice my opinion, and I was told that it was a decision made by the mayor. I then asked if I could speak to you, Mr. Sitma, and I was told that you weren't in, but that I could call you. I called and received your email or your voicemail, Mr. Mayor. I left you a message regarding the context of my message as well as my cell phone number, asking you to return my call so that I could voice my concerns. I didn't hear from you, so I wrote a letter to the Minot Daily News in the opinion page. I still haven't heard from you. Therefore, I'm making, therefore, here I am today making certain that you hear my voice. I understand that there are current issues at the state level regarding backlash in the LGBTQ resolution. As a taxpaying citizen, I don't agree with your decision to raise the LGBTQ flag at City Hall. This building, Mr. Mayor, City Hall belongs to we, the people. Yes, that means all of the people. Your decision to take this action will have several repercussions. Decisions such as this are what have led to riots, looting, and destruction in our major cities. It all starts with a simple act such as this. Let's give this or that organization some recognition. Let's give, or let's make them feel like they're an important part of our community. I get all of that. But you, as an individual, have the right to march in any parade that you choose. You, as an individual, have the right to support any cause that you choose. However, Mr. Mayor, you do not have the right to push anyone's agenda or lifestyle on our city, especially a blatant display such as a flag at the building that is paid for by taxpayers. I honor our American flag, and I support the North Dakota state flag that is currently displayed at buildings paid for by the people of this great state. Hanging flags of any other nature should not be permitted unless voted on by the ballot box, a decision made by the people. If you choose to support a cause, any cause, hang the flag above your front door, not that of the people. Today, it's LGBTQ. What's next? BLM, Antifa, white supremacy? You've opened up a can of worms, Mr. Mayor, and I pray that lunacy does not prevail on the streets of our fine city due to a poor decision brought to us by you. This year, the Supreme Court ruled that the gay and transgender people are protected under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Apparently, the Supreme Court ruling isn't sufficient enough. The old saying, "Give them an inch and they'll take a mile", it has relevancy because it's a fact. You said in your own words, Mr. Mayor, that discrimination will not stand and will not be tolerated in our community. When you made this statement, I have to wonder, what is your definition of discrimination? Is it the act, practice, or an instance of discriminating categorically rather than individually? Or is it the quality or power finally distinguishing the act of making or perceiving a difference? Or is it simply the process by which two stimuli differ in some aspect and are responded to differently? Thus, a difference of opinion. You stated in your video on the website Evans for Minot that when you started to get information coming in regarding your decision to raise the flag, that you got to see the ugliness and the bigotry firsthand. Bigotry is one who regards or treats members of a group with hatred and intolerance. You then proceeded to read an email from Donald and Kimberly. Immediately after quoting their email, your words, Mr. Mayor, were this. It's amazing how ignorance and intolerance can be cited from one single Bible verse and one single opinion. You see, Mr. Mayor, your own words can be interpreted by others as a difference of opinion as well. I'm not here to judge. Judgment belongs to a higher power than all of us here. But there is nothing in that email that warranted the label of bigotry, ugliness, intolerance, hatred, or ignorance. Accusing people of this community of bigotry, discrimination, ignorance, ugliness, and being intolerant of others because they simply have a difference of opinion is completely unwarranted. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you owe them an apology. Thank you.
Gentlemen, if you just keep clapping, you will have your opportunity to come forward. And just a response on Ms. Magnuson. I do apologize for not calling as I did have a tremendous amount and still have a number of people to call back and email and respond on social media. So your phone call is coming. And I did read your article from the Minot Daily News. So thank you. Your name and address for the?
Yeah, I'm Simeon Waddington. And my address is 8603 219th Avenue Southwest Douglas. I'm in South Perry. And we own buildings on the move. We've contributed at least a quarter of a million dollars spent in this city in the last 10 years. And David Hans is our accountant. You can verify that. And this year has been one of our better years, believe it or not. And I'm not very good at speaking in public. I got a license with the state to do construction. But I want to definitely voice my opinion here. And I noticed some smirks from the lady here. I ain't sure who she is that seemed to think. I seem to, yeah.
Ms. Evans, let's just let him speak.
I don't see anything funny at all about this. I'm here on behalf of my children, my grandchildren. And I will tell you, I've let my business know that we will take all of our money to Bismarck or to surrounding areas. We will quit spending here. That I mean. I will not support somebody that will raise a flag like that. And this, and I pay taxes here too, by the way. Plenty of them. I will not support a city that will raise a flag LGBT. Now, that's a really pretty name, but let's clarify that. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transvestite. Now, I don't know what the Q's for and the plus. Maybe somebody could tell me that. I'd like to know. Do you know what that is?
It's queer.
Queer, okay.
Fair questioning.
So it's queer plus, okay. So now we have the clear understanding. I've had a couple people, neighbor farmers, ask me, what is that? Embarrassingly, I had an elderly farmer, a large farmer, that lives nearby out there, had a sober the other night. And he asked me, what is this LGBT I keep hearing about? Well, I said, well, there was a time when we wouldn't speak about that in our living rooms openly. We didn't. I remember those days, and I'm not very old. I'm only 58. But I said, but I'll go ahead because it's everywhere now and people do need to be aware of it. I said it. I watched the misses and misters face blush, get red. That's not a joke. That's for real. That's no kidding. I was ashamed to have to tell that elderly couple what the flag was up on their city court. And it does make me mad. It angers me. I'll tell you that right now. Now, somebody said here at the, well, I believe it was you, Mr. Mayor, at the onset of this meeting, that you had threatening calls, so you have extra security here. Well, I don't see anybody threatening here, just anger, threatening to pull funds in support. But I don't see anything physically threatening here. I think that was a shame to have to say that. I think you didn't see anything threatening here. But I think you wanted to make us very aware and intimidated. And we are not intimidated. Just so you know, I don't know how many calls I've had today, people that couldn't make it here tonight that are very upset. No kidding. There was three other businesses right here in Minot that planned on being here that was, called me, let me know. They weren't able to make it tonight. The support, a lot of business here. Now, I'm going to tell you something. We can pull down the Ten Commandments out of our courtyards, out of our schools. We can slap God in the face, mock God. His word says he will not be mocked, just so you know. You ain't getting away with it. And then raise up a flag praising something that God's word speaks against. Now, I'm going to tell you a warning. I'm just here to warn you. That's why I'm here. Not about physical violence. I'm here to warn you of God's judgment. God will not let this go. You will not. Hear me. You may go to church. I'm disappointed that there isn't. This room ought to be full of pastors. And you may, wait.
You have one minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. But the word of God says this. You have a form of godliness, but you deny the power thereof. Jesus himself said, "If you say you love me, but you keep not my commandments", he says, "you lie, and the truth is not in you." In another place, he says, "you deceive yourselves". Don't deceive yourselves. Know the word, because heaven and earth shall pass away, God's word says. But not one jot or one tit will pass away from God's word. It will be fulfilled to the end.
Thank you, sir. Rest, please.
My name is Josiah Royce. I'm at 1547th Loop. I'm the owner of Stormtroopers LLC and Yoga Fayu. Now, first off, I want to say I agree with everything that the previous two residents had said. But to add a new flavor to it, so to speak, to talk about representation of the, and the numbers in this community. Of course, we know there are people in this community that, you know, feel represented by the rainbow flag, the LGBT flag. But that flag outside that window and in this very room, the American flag, that's something that unifies us all, and that's why it's up there. The North Dakota flag as well unifies us all as North Dakotans. But the American flag represents the hearts of Americans, and the LGBT flag represents the genitals of certain Americans. Now, I've always thought the genitals were kind of a sacred thing in the sense that, for one, what you do with them is your business and not mine. I don't want to know. I'm sure I speak for many people here when I say that. But also, as was said before me, you can raise your own. You can have a rainbow flag, and that is fine. No one's gonna, you know, write an email to you about it, I'm sure. Or if you do, so what? But you can put a bumper sticker on your car. Just don't put a bumper sticker on my car, and I won't put one on yours. That's an individual thing. For us as local Minot people, and I'm on board with him. I'll take my business elsewhere. I'm usually in Bismarck half the time anyway. I might as well just move my business there and try to, you know, expand it there. But above all, even if you are atheist and don't believe in God and don't care about any of those values or anything, you have to respect that. In terms of the numbers game here, there's probably a larger Star Wars fan base here than there is LGBT community. And, I mean, where's the Star Wars flag being raised? Or Vikings fans? Since we're next door to Minnesota, let's raise a Vikings flag. And as long as we're on that page, how about a heterosexual flag? And a little Confederate flag? I mean, the list goes on and on. And as she had said earlier, you opened a can of worms. And do you want all those worms? Because to pick and choose, a certain few is not going to last. This is a slippery slope, and it will continue to slide. If any of you are unaware, I'd like to point out that the state of California, who seems to be a trendsetter amongst the 50, has just passed legislation reducing penalties for pedophilic behavior as long as the child victim was willing. And they are trying to become included in the LGBT group. Whether or not that happens is yet to be seen. But the fact that that's who they want to identify with, I think, says that that's something that we as Americans and the North Dakotans do not want to feel represented by. And in closing, I would say I've been a proud citizen of Minot. I've represented us twice on the national TV show American Ninja Warrior. They always like you to show some hometown pride. And I admit, I would have trouble doing this with that flag in the background because regardless of everything else, it doesn't unify us as North Dakotans. The American flag does, and so does the North Dakota flag. I'm even in contact with producers from those shows that I want to, from other shows that want to possibly produce a TV show based right in here in Minot that me and my brothers have written and are trying to get sold. I'm not so certain I'd want that TV show to happen here anymore. And, Mr. Mayor, I've spoken to you about that TV show last year. You met with me and one of those producers. And he's been looking forward to his next trip back to Minot. But I plead with you. Don't support putting up flags that don't represent all Americans.
Steve Hamilton, here from Minot, born and raised, 619 13th Street, Southeast. And I was shocked when I saw that. I was a kid born and raised in this town. And I always admired Minot and where I grew up, the freedom that was here. So proud of this town. Been a setback citizen, don't say a lot. But this really hit the barrel. I sat and I watched that video. That's how I got introduced to it, sitting 400 miles away from home, and watched such disgust. And the reason I had such disgust is because of that door that got opened. That door got bigger than what you guys thought it was. You know, you think it's just a measurement of a flag or we didn't follow certain orders. No, that isn't what it was. You open a door for me and every citizen in the city of Minot, and you won't be able to stop it. I can either put something good up on that pole or I can put something bad on that pole because you opened that door. You allowed advertising down at City Hall. You allowed advertising done at City Hall. And I don't know how you could stop me, because I made a phone call this week, finding out the process that I need to go through, so I could have advertising done at City Hall. My God, I didn't think that was ever going to happen. I didn't know City Hall opened up a big billboard today. Everybody that wants to can come down now, you just got to meet with city council, get an okay, and you can hang or put an advertising sign on the front lawn of City Hall. But some of them signs are going to be good, some of them signs are not. Some of these people that sit here are going to be against the flag that was hung, some are not. Now, I'll be down here next week, because I want my flag hung up on that pole. I want my group and my advertising done. And mine's on a religious level. Let's see how many on the right side or the left side don't like that. This has started a war that you created. You know, there's a lot of us here in the city of Minot, we sit quietly. Matter of fact, to tell you how quiet I am, I've never seen the inside of this building. I'm 58 years old. I always had my trust, my faith in you people right there. I lost all faith in each and every one of you because of what you did. I watched the burning in Chicago, Minneapolis, I'm an over the road truck driver. My life is threatened every day I'm out on that road, because of signs and what you guys just did out here. I don't have the freedom no more. With hanging that stuff out there, and so it's taken my freedom, my free speech away, that's why I'm here today. It's bigger than you thought. When I called on Friday, they told me, well, we fixed the problem. Oh, you did? Yep, we saw it the minute we opened up the flag. No, you didn't. You should have recognized it before you even thought about putting a different flag up there. Because what he thought we corrected was the size and what they did, they brought it back down. They made it same size or smaller than the American flag. No, you didn't. You opened up advertising for good and for bad. You opened up what's going on in Chicago and Minneapolis. And what arrogance, what arrogance. We all sit up here in these nice suits and get these name tags.
Mr. Hamilton.
I don't even know any of you.
Where?
Is my time up?
It's me.
Oh, is it you?
It's me, not these folks, it's me.
You, you and your party, I can address it that way. You turn around, and you got all this fancy names and all this stuff going on, but you can't even look at the small little things that can turn into a bombshell. I already see our guns coming, it's coming next. Our freedoms are being taken away. But I'll tell you something, there's a silent group of people, and they're not here today. But in all the lifetime that I've lived, I've never been so pissed off in my entire life and so disappointed in our member of our mayor, because they're bringing war to the city of Minot.
My name is Russell Shower. My address is 110 Main Avenue North, Regent, North Dakota, 58650. And I heard about this through some friends, and I thought, I'm here to try to bring some understanding. You know, we pledge allegiance to the flag, one nation under God. And then we're doing, under God, what God is it? I think the people of America is turning to the God of this world, to the God of heaven. And the Bible also says in Proverbs, there's a way that seemeth right unto a man, but therein are the ways of death. So we can all be fooled. The Bible says, the blind shall lead, the blind in the shall all fall in the ditch. So there's an answer. And I was up, I'll go anyplace in North Dakota, because I stand behind North Dakota. I'm a businessman, I'm a farmer, I'm a construction worker, but there is an answer to America. And if we don't turn, I mean, I love all of you guys, but if we don't turn to the truth, and here's what our forefathers says, an education without the gospel of Jesus Christ is no education at all. Because they know if we fall away from the principles of truth, of the word of God, our American flag, they did it, they had principles of truth, and they said this nation could go on indefinitely forever if we would follow the truth of these principles of the word of God. And here we're defying it in every way. You know what? I got relatives that were ex homosexuals, I got friends that are homosexuals, I love them all, but here's the choice, we got to make a choice for life and not for death. And we can be deceived and don't know it, the blind shall lead, the blind shall all fall in the ditch. And I can tell you, God will love all of you guys, even if you go to heaven or you go to hell, God's going to love you. But the thing is, if we could turn to the truth, there's an answer. Because right now, I was up at Dickerson when the protesters were there, and the motorcycle people says, Russ, don't go over, it's going to be a bad deal, it's going to be, no. I'm not, I got a plaque in my lodge, it says, he that bows before God can stand up to anyone. And I bow before God. I was, I was a very religionist person at one time. But I was deceiving myself and I was deceiving others. In a locker room, as a fighter, I got on my knees and I told Jesus, if you can change my life from with, I can't do it from without, but if you can change it from within, I'm going to surrender to you tonight, and your word will guide and direct me the rest of my life. And when I got out of that ring and I walked towards the locker room, one minute I was walking in darkness, the next second, the spirit of God hit me and I knew I was walking in the light of the Lord Jesus Christ. I knew if I fell over dead, I was going to heaven, not because of what I did, I thought I'm going to earn my way, okay, earn my way to heaven. But I found out through Jesus Christ, he paid it all. And I knew that night, Romans 8:9, unless Christ be in you, you're not of his. And then Romans 8:16, my spirit will bear witness with your spirit that you're the children of God. And we can all have that good, we can have that, all that good life if we're willing to surrender. Bless you.
Name and address, sir.
Hi, my name's Eli Waddington. I'm Simeon Waddington's son, same address. We also ranch and run cattle and horses. I'm a rancher and a horse trainer, help with construction, do a lot of business in Minot. First of all, I want to state the fact that I know of anyone, anybody here that was concerned about this, nobody I know of has made any threats at all. And I have not made any. I want to say I appreciate our police department very much. Thanks to them, we have a, we have had a safe city to shop in and a good county. We've always been law-abiding citizens. I was raised under the Ten Commandments, and that's also a law, it's the law of God. And because of that, I've never been in trouble with the law. Christ changed my heart years ago, and I respect our law. Because without laws, we don't have anything. And that's something that is super, super important, and you see, God is a God of love, but he's also a God, he's a perfect God, so he's a judging God, just like you guys are here. You have your judges, and when people step out of your laws, our laws, they pay the penalty. Now, that being said, I hope that you have the nerve to back up our police department when this city starts seeing the kind of garbage that's been going on around the country, when people start coming in and rioting and tearing things down because of the door that you've opened. I hope that you'll stand behind our police department, because they don't have some huge, high-paying job, some wonderful, easy job. No, their job entails a whole lot of garbage that a lot of people don't even consider. Taking care of drunks that are walking down the street, that want to fight back, and they ain't trying to hurt them, they're trying to put them in jail so they can protect them from hurting themselves out on the streets at night. Little things like that, it gets a whole lot worse and dirtier than that. Well, I made up my mind when I found out about what happened in town here, and I'm not rich, but I do spend a lot of money in Minot. We run a lot of money through. I'm not going to spend money in Minot anymore. I know this guy over here was talking about keeping your money local. I'll go to Bismarck and Garrison, and it ain't a big deal to me, because what I feel is right in my heart, when it comes to doing what I know is right, that's what matters to me. I don't care if it's going to cost me some more gas money. In fact, I waste a lot of money running back and forth to Minot five times a week and sometimes more. I'll get more organized and I'll go to Bismarck. Because I'm not going to support a city that opens doors like that, because like these other people said, they're going to bring in all kinds of stuff now. Let me tell you something, the Black Lives Matter movement and stuff, most of them ain't even black people. Now, I have black friends, and I love them as much as anybody. Everybody was created equal, everybody. Even the LGBTQ+ community was created equal. We all have the same choice. I have nothing against anybody, I'm not prejudiced. This BLM thing, like I said, there's not even very many blacks, I know plenty, there ain't very many black people participating in it. All lives matter. Christ came for all. Everybody that would turn to him, but Christ said, when he set many free, and when he healed many, he said, go and sin no more. Now, is it a sin for me to steal? The list goes on and on and on. Well, I'm going to leave you with that.
Wendy Walker, 517 Main Street, South in Minot. Before we disperse, I want to thank every one of you.
Say, ma'am, ma'am. Ma'am, you addressed the council and not the audience.
I will.
Thank you.
But I just had to say thank you. It came to my attention last Thursday evening that the gay pride flag was flying over our City Hall in Minot. Friday morning, I called Mayor Sitma and all the aldermen. I did not hear back from Mr. Mayor or Mr. Padraig O'Leary. Thank you, all of the rest of you, for returning my call or picking up my phone call when I called you. Thank you so very much. Mr. Mayor, I would like to understand how the decision was made to fly a flag of a special interest group. Now, do you want me to pause so you can answer my questions?
I can certainly answer at the end, so you can have your five minutes, or it's your choice.
Okay, I'll pause so you can answer them. Number one, who brought the proclamation to you to fly the LGBT flag?
If you're asking on who brought the proclamation.
The proclamation, yes.
I would look to Alderwoman Evans.
Alderwoman Evans, okay. What was the date that she brought that proclamation to you? I'm not speaking to you right now, ma'am.
Wait, are you asking questions?
I'm asking the mayor questions.
And he said, I can answer the question for him. So do you want?
No, that's all I was asking, who brought the proclamation.
Okay, keep on asking your rhetorical questions.
Okay, what was that date that she brought that proclamation to you, sir?
I would actually have to look back at the date, I don't recall it off the top.
Well, we'd like to know. Please check on that and get back to me. The next question is, were the council members aware of the proclamation that was brought to you?
The answer to that is no, typically because proclamations issued by the mayor don't come before council unless they are ratified for policy.
So they did not have any input? No, none of these other council members had any input, except Ms. Evans?
None of the aldermen have had input on any of the other times that flag's been flown
But she did have input?
She had asked.
She brought the proclamation?
She had brought the proclamation.
Okay.
To my attention, yes.
Okay.
Magic City Equality brought the proclamation.
I'm sorry, it was.
I did not.
Okay, I stand corrected.
I did not even know it was coming, because that was the first council meeting I was sworn in.
Okay, I stand corrected, ma'am.
Who brought the proclamation?
Magic City Equality.
How was the decision made by you to fly the flag over City Hall, this LGBT flag?
Well, thank you for the question, I do appreciate the opportunity to actually respond. Through a number of conversations that I'd had with a number of people that are in the LGBT community, and I am friends with some of those folks that fit under that, and not necessarily that they identify with that group itself, and I say that group as the organization of itself. And listening to the stories of some of the absolute hatred that they had endured simply because of being different, and I want to use that word different as the premise of what led down to this discussion, is that it's been referenced a couple of times, that there isn't hate, or that they're not against those folks. There's been a lot of phone calls that I've taken, and again, I apologize for not getting back to you, this is the answer, I've experienced a tremendous amount of hate towards me and towards the folks that fit under that umbrella. So what led to my decision on that was also seeing a population within our community that does need to have that issue addressed, the issue of hate. When they came to me, they had stated that they wanted a call for kindness, not necessarily acceptance, but a call for kindness. And that I can appreciate.
I'm going to press on here.
Please.
Sir. Okay. How was your decision to fly the flag conveyed to the community at large, through the newspaper, the radio, the TV?
I think the folks saw on Facebook Live and the media was here.
But when you set the date to do that, how did, how did we, the community at large, get that message that this was going to happen on that date?
I think the organization had put out a press release, is why the media was there.
But they were there on that date, right?
Yes.
Correct?
It was on.
But I'm asking, did we have any foreknowledge that this event was going to take place?
That was the press release that I mentioned, yes.
And when was that?
Magic City Equality put that out, ma'am, didn't come from City Hall.
City Hall is not a good place to fly a flag representing a special interest group. No special interest group should be permitted to fly their flag on the City Hall flag pole. There already is a flag flying above the City Hall that represents each one of us, it's a flag of the United States of America. Can we expect to see a Black Lives Matter flag flying over our City Hall in the near future? Because that is the rumor I hear in our community, that this is in the works.
I smirk, ma'am, because that is one of the immediate questions, is whether Antifa or Black Lives Matter, and for folks that represent hate, or those that are geared towards violence, absolutely not.
Okay. One more thing, Mr. Mayor, making this decision on your own is way too much power, and we're not happy. That flag is called an abomination to God. We love God and must stand for truth. When the righteous rule, the people rejoice; when the wicked rule, the people mourn.
My name is Helen Otto, and I live at 4921 County Road 19 South, and I'm here to maybe be here on the wrong night for my problem, but I've spoken with Mr. Ross, and I'm worried about my home and where I live, and the fact that I'm a widow and I live there alone, and I need to appraise my house, and I can't have it done, because somewhere along the line, the city blamed the county, the county blamed the city, but the city took over in 2012. out where I live, Chaparral, and I live on County Road 19 and Chaparral is right behind me. And the problem is that they changed the zoning to light industrial when 68 properties out there are all residential. So I can't refinance my home because no bank, not even the one that I'm mortgaged with now, will give me a refinancing because of the way my home is zoned. And nobody ever told us, we moved in there 32 years ago, it was residential and it should still be residential. I looked up your qualifications for what constitutes light industrial regulations. I have a half acre lot, I'm not even big enough to be light industrial. So I was told by your previous zoning guy that I would have a letter last week stating that the city was going to take care of this. Mr. Ross also told me the city was going to take care of it. And what I'm here to ask tonight is, where are we at on it? How's it going? Are we looking into it? Did I get put under the rug or what?
Well, first, Ms. Otto, thank you for taking the time and staying here to get your questions asked. I'm going to ask Mr. Billingsley to actually come forward and answer your question for you. It's not underneath the rug. I believe that Mr. Ross and Mr. Billingsley are addressing this, and just for a quick reference, the 2012 change that you referenced was also a substantial amount of other changes that happened throughout the community, many of which we're trying to address and get back into, I would say, a more proper section of where some of those properties are, I think, listed for their use. So I'm going to ask Mr. Billingsley to come forward to answer your question for you, if you want to just step aside here and if you have any follow-up questions, we'll certainly hear them.
Let's do this before I have a heart attack.
Yep, if you want to just take another step aside so he can answer for you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, we have scheduled a public hearing for her property and the properties of her neighbors. It will go to the Planning Commission the first Tuesday of October, and then the rezone will be presented for a public hearing before the City Council during their second meeting of October. There is a two reading process, therefore, this would be complete by the first meeting of November. So yes, it is in the process, the application has been filed and we are moving forward with the rezone.
Thank you, Mr. Billingsley. Further questions?
No, I just know that Mr. Elaine was going to retire and so-
And I apologize if there was some gap there within that communication, but we do have his replacement either hired or already on staff, and Mr. Billingsley is making sure that this is working its way through the system. Again, unfortunately, things had happened long before any of us were up here, but they have been identified, along with many others, that are working through the process. So we do apologize for that inconvenience.
Thank Mr. Ross for returning a call to me.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to point out, too, that when this issue was identified and Mr. Billingsley brought this forward, rather than just addressing this on a property-by-property case, so for example, Ms. Otto had to bring hers for a rezone, the problem was identified, so the decision was made to address all of those properties at the same time. So it's taken a little bit to get this going, but that is what we anticipate happening, to address all of them, get them cleaned up all at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Langfield. Thank you, Mr. Billingsley, I appreciate that.
Mayor?
Alderman Padregula.
Just for the record, a correction. A previous person said that they had called me and I didn't return their call, I never received a message. Every call, everyone that calls I try to talk to emails, if they're a mass-market approach, I don't respond to, but normally I try to, so just wanted to correct the record on that. If you call me, I'll call you back.
If you would, sir, name an address for the record, please.
Walker, 517 South Main Street, Minot. I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, Mr. Mayor, as well as the alderman. I do have to correct you, I think, on something, Mr. Mayor. You've interjected the term anger. Nobody else has used the term, no, hatred, I'm sorry, excuse me. You said hatred. Three or four times, you've used the word hatred. Nobody else here has used that word. They're angry. Your term is inflammatory. And I think you should rethink that. But I would like to thank all the aldermen and you, Mr. Mayor. You're obviously, based on your body language, you're in touch with what's going on here tonight. Everybody but Ms. Evans. She's not in touch at all with what's going on here. All you have to do is observe her body language. You gentlemen, and you, ma'am, and you, you're all, you're sucking it up. You're listening, you're hearing it, you're getting it. She's not.
Can I tell, I want, no, Mr. Mayor, I have to respond.
Alderwoman Evans, we'll give him his five minutes and I'll give you response after that.
I'm going to involve you pretty soon, so you get your chance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker.
You bet. You deserve to have your voice heard. So, Mr. Mayor, you shared with us who brought this proclamation to you. Who was that again?
That was the committee, as corrected.
The committee, what committee?
That would be the committee-
City Equality.
-Magic City Equality.
Magic City Equality. So now I have a question for Ms. Evans.
You bet.
What is your connection and/or involvement with that group?
Nothing.
Nothing?
I have attended some of their events.
Okay, that's it?
That is it.
Nothing more?
Nothing more, sir.
Okay. Could you share with us your thoughts about that flag being flown?
Oh, you bet. So, as some of you may not be aware-
And just one point.
Yes, Mr. Walker?
I've heard enough, I'll put my hand up.
Okay.
Just like the mayor does with us.
Okay.
I'm not waving at you.
But guess what, you don't get to tell me when I can stop speaking.
Well, I'm going to.
I'm an elected official, you can't do that.
Can I do that, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Walker, if she's given the floor, I'm going to give her the five minutes, just like everyone else-
Okay, five minutes.
-and I will let you finish up your five minutes.
And you'll start the clock.
Clock is running as soon as-
Please, please go ahead.
I don't need five minutes.
Please go ahead.
So, Mr. Walker, if you're not aware, and I think a lot of people in this room are not aware, and have come here just because this is a gay issue, I am proudly the first openly elected lesbian in North Dakota. So that is why I'm not paying any heed to your crap. I, we the people, I'm the people, I live in Minot, I have a taxpayer, I am a person. I get to see myself represented on that flag pole, just as much as the people who got the Juneteenth flag last month, as much as the POW MIAs will get later this month. Every single person is entitled to see themselves represented. We are not some group of people who live in San Francisco or Seattle. We are here. We are your elected officials, we are your brothers, we are your sisters. And don't tell me you're not hatred and anger. That's all I feel, I've had to listen to it for days now, as is the mayor and many of my colleagues. It is unacceptable. This city is big enough for all of us. Me having a flag flying doesn't take away anything from your rights and freedoms. But you know what it does for me? It shows me, I live in a city that appreciates and embraces me and the people of my community, and that I can live here and feel safe. That's what it does. I'm sorry, it doesn't make you feel comfortable, but we're here, we're queer, and we're not going away.
Thank you. Thank you for exposing yourself and your anger.
That's anger, right?
And hatred.
That is, you bet.
Because, Mr. Mayor, that pin you have on your coat there, what is that a pin of?
If you're talking about the red, white, and blue-
Yeah.
-that is the American flag.
That's the American flag.
And I think your eyes are good enough to see that.
And who does that represent?
Represent, excuse me, I will not stand for any kind of the peanut gallery stuff. We have one gentleman at the podium and that is going to stand. If anybody else has a problem with that, I will have and ask that you be removed. Thank you. It represents Americans.
All Americans?
I don't like to repeat myself.
Does it represent all Americans?
I think I've already answered that.
Wow. It represents, being you don't know the correct answer, I'll give it to you. It represents all Americans, all of us. And it represents-
Ms. Evans, please.
Are you going to, would you stop interrupting me, please? It represents Ms. Evans as well. Everybody is represented by that flag. We do not have to fly any other flags below it because everybody is already represented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. For reference, under the U.S. Code Title IV, Section 7, Subsection F, for reference, it reads, "When flags of the United States, cities, or localities, or pendants of societies are flown on the same halliard with the flag of the United States, the latter should always be at the peak," meaning the United States' flag always at the peak. And that is where I took my reference when the request came, not only for this flag but for the others, just so that everyone else understands, and that is under the U.S. Code. Name an address.
My name is Nancy Baumelmann Bruce, I live here in Minot. There's a lot of upset people, I don't think they're angry, I think they're just upset about this flag that's being raised. It's not what it stands for. It has nothing to do with it. I have friends that are gay, I couldn't care less. If you want to put a flag in your house, go ahead. I don't think it's right to have it on that pole. In my eyes, it's disrespecting the United States of America, the flag that we stand for. Putting something large under the U.S. flag is very disrespectful. Nothing should be on that pole, nothing, but that flag. If you guys are going to put that flag on that pole, I'll guarantee you it's going to be taken down by somebody or an organization, they're not going to put up with it. If you want to start raising flags on that pole, not just that one, how about the Native American flag? What about all the Native American girls that are trafficking for sex trafficking? They're disappearing, there's 800,000 a year. They don't know where they are. Let's put their flag up there. Let's put a breast cancer flag up there. Let's put a brain cancer flag up there. My niece died at three years old of a brain cancer. Let's put her flag up there, too. If you're going to open up Pandora's Box, let's open it up wide. I was told the council did not vote on this, but just the mayor and Ms. Evans, and that was their decision. This is why we pay you guys, to make those decisions, not just one or two people. We want everybody to make a decision. And it turns out like that didn't happen. I had a council member meet with three of us yesterday, and I thank him very much for that. He took time out of his life and his family to come hear what we said about that flag. He told us both sides the both stories. The people in Minot want to know why, why this was voted without the council members, and can we put flags up there as well? If that flag goes up next week, I'll guarantee you, I will be down here with a Native American flag, I will be down here with a brain cancer flag, a breast cancer flag, I'll guarantee, and they better stay up there. If that flag stays up there, mine's going to stay up there.
Public appearances, this is an opportunity for anyone else to come forward and speak on any item that is or is not on the agenda.
My name is Elijah Royce, 2109 Fifth Avenue Southwest, as well as 609 West Poro Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. Now, I'd like to tell a little story, if you won't mind, regarding the raising of the flag and a reoccurring word in this room. I play in a band in Nashville with my brother, and it's a reoccurring tradition in Nashville to sing the birthday song for someone who's it's birthday, with an appropriate twist of, "We hope you get some tonight." And one gentleman that was in there happened to be gay. I guess our bandleader sensed some disapproval on my part, and after the show, I got reamed out and accused of hating gay people. Hate is a very, very strong word, and there's very seldom things in this world I hate. One, being my very own sin that I commit, more than anything. Two, being wrongly accused. And I'm a man of principle. If I disapprove of something, I'm going to make it known. And to this day, to unrelated events, I'm possibly being removed from that band because I am a man of principle. And I'm a young man at that, but there are many people in Minot who are also men of principle, and they will take their business elsewhere. And like my brother Josiah said, we will film our TV show somewhere else. I pray to Jesus that we won't have to do that because I love Minot, North Dakota, and I love America, and I hope to stay here.
Last call for public comments.
Cynthia Sessions, 800 Harmony Street Northwest. And I just want to say, Commissioner Evans, everybody that spoke in this room, they're not public speakers, you can tell, but they came because the issue is so strong to them. No one hates you, I think it's the lifestyle. But you mentioned earlier that you ran and you're the first openly gay official and commissioner or official in North Dakota. And I remember getting a call from your mother, I don't think it was all above board. I remember getting a call from your mother, "Will you vote for my daughter? Will you vote for my daughter?" And I got a postcard in the mail, and I thought, great, another women, another voice. But after you took the seat and you had said that you were gay, I thought, well, you know, that was a pretty dishonest move. But maybe you felt you had to do that. The other thing I want to mention is, to correlate the LGBTQ flag with the POW MIA flag is something I can't stomach. I don't think anybody else maybe in this room can stomach that either. But I want you to, you know, no one hates you. You have talents, you, I'm sure, you know, the people who know you, love you. What's issue here is people believe God has stated how people should live and believe that and are on the other side of the fence. So that, I think that's what's issued here.
So I just want to respond to one thing. Did my mother share with you that I also have multiple scurries this when she called?
Well, I don't think that's-
No, but I mean, I was very upfront about my MS and my sexual orientation on my website. It was not certainly a campaign issue. It is part of who I am, just like having MS is part of who I am. Certainly, it's not what I lead in with when I call a voter and ask for their vote because it shouldn't matter who I love, for if you elect me as your city council member, it shouldn't matter. You're electing me because I'm competent and I will represent your viewpoints.
I would like to know how-
Excuse me, you are not at the podium.
How does she get to do that without-
Because-
Because you know what?
Because I am the presiding officer.
You didn't reside this, I want to say-
I am going to ask you now to be quiet, or I am going to ask you to leave the chambers. I am asking for her to finish and then Ms. Sessions can respond and then we can move forward.
I'm finished, Mr. Mayor. Well, I only brought it up because you make it such an issue. You made this, but I'm telling you-
I didn't until you guys reacted this way to me and my community last week.
I just have one thing to say to the council.
How can we sit back at the city and let these people run you like this? This is a shame. I believe and I'm sorry. This is wrong. She butts in and says what she wants. This is wrong. You're pushing your agenda.
Ms. Sessions, just pause for a second.
That's okay.
I am going to wait for them to leave-
No, 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 no. I don't blame him. So I'm finished, thank you.
Anything new to-
I didn't quite use up my five minutes. I kept track of that. So anyway, I just want to make something clear. First of all, as I said before, I appreciate government and our law enforcement very much. It's because of them, mostly, we have a safe city to shop in. And I can feel confident to bring my wife and my little girl into town and know that there's- that there's law in town. But you see, when there's lawlessness, you don't have any order. So they left, that lady quit talking because she didn't feel she was being treated fairly. I think you better go home and consider that and think about it. When you make laws, try to apply them to both parties and be fair, so. And please, please support our police department, because I have a feeling they're gonna need some support if other communities start coming in here and pushing all kinds of stuff.
I'll gladly respond to that, to Chief Klug and the rest of the great men and women who protect our city, and they know absolutely that they have my support, the same way that they had my support when they showed up in my neighborhood Saturday morning because of some lawlessness. And I will leave it at that. This is a last call for public appearances for anyone else to come up and speak before we move on. We do have one more item on our agenda.
My name is Trent Waddington Douglas. I guess I got one question I've been thinking about. Do you have kids or grandkids?
I do have kids.
Young ones, like, say, five years old, 10 years old?
They've grown up a little more, 21 and 14.
Well, just supposing they were, say, five, 10 years old. And they drove by and they seen that flag and asked what it was. Wouldn't you be embarrassed to tell them?
Mr. Waddington, I've actually had this conversation with my 21-year-old and my 14-year-old of exactly why. And I've had a lot of people question me about my own family values over this.
Well, it's not our C Y.
And I don't hang my head in shame as the why when it is a call for kindness within the community.
Okay, so if next week I want to put up the dove flag, are you gonna let us?
That is a big question of what, why are you coming to me in the terms of what are you hoping to identify for either honoring someone or identifying an issue within our own community?
It'd be identifying Christ as that identifies Satan.
Well, then, that is a question that would be answered when you probably bring it before either the council or myself.
You never give a straight answer. It's like watching the Washington DC. You know what I mean? Wow. Well, that's what I've been thinking about. Like, I've got a niece that's almost three, and if she asks, she asks all kinds of questions, she asks what it was, I wouldn't tell her. I'd tell her it's a rainbow, which means God said he'll never destroy the flood, the earth again by flood, by water, which was destroyed over these same issues. So it's not about hatred. It's the hatred of the sin, not the person. So if you can't get that, then you're not a very smart person. You know, and I don't care if I said disrespectful or not. Facts are what they are. You know, Sodom and Gomorrah was destroyed over this. You guys can disagree, but you can look it up. You know, I don't know if you claim to be Lutheran Catholic or 150 other denominations, but if you're for this, you may as well throw it out the window and become an atheist. That's all I got to say. I don't know what to tell you.
Tell one other gentleman that wanted to come forward, and we're hitting our one-hour mark on public appearances.
Okay, my name is Adam Wilbur, and I just have a short question statement to make. The thing that came in mind is something I've thought about over the years. There's been considerations made for adding additional letters to the LGBTQ. The one thing that's been troubling is the letter P. And the plus that's at the end of this, LGBTQ, is for adding letters. It's for adding other ideas, whatever things they want to try. Oh, my question is this. Do you know what the letter P stands for? It stands for pedosexual. That means that pedophiles would be glorified. If that letter P is added to LGBTQ a year from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, are you still gonna fly that flag?
The short answer to that is if it represents something of hatred or others, no. No. We are at a one-hour mark, and if there's something new that you do have to add?
I do, sir. It's what you just said as the gentleman was walking away. As I had stated earlier about the California Legislature, they're reducing the penalty for pedophilia as long as the child is willing. So what you define is a, it's a slippery term, the definition of hate. You're saying as long as it's not an act of hatred. Well, if a pedophile engages in what we know pedophiles to do and commits that act, but he's not doing it out of hatred, he's doing it out of his own instinct or whatever you want to call it, you can see where that's a slippery slope and a dangerous one, because as long as he's not doing it in hatred, then it's okay? I mean, I mean, what, what do you, if you would care to elaborate on that?
My elaboration on that, sir, would be categorizing an entire group of people based on something in California. The indication of-
No, sir, I said the pedophiles specifically. I just used California as an example, just to be clear.
No, but the insinuation is that anybody that's flying under that flag then needs to be characterized and categorized, exactly what you said. We can get into a battle of breath here. I am here to listen, sir. We can get into a battle of breath over theology or the difference of opinions on this, and I know I'm not gonna move your opinion on this.
Nor will I yours. I'm aware of that. I'm just trying to stay strictly to the logic of, of, of how you define, you know, hatred or violence or things like that, because if, if it's pedophilia, which is now extremely illegal and definitely harmful on multiple levels, and you're saying that you would allow it to be flown as long as it's not representing hatred, well, that's a very concerning thing for us all.
That is not what I was saying.
Okay, I'm hoping you would clarify that.
That is not what I was saying.
You said as long as it doesn't reflect an act of hatred.
The generality of a flag representing hatred and/or illegal, that, that is the premise of what I said. If it is something that is illegal, there is no way that I would allow a flag to be flown. I don't think anybody else in this community or city would.
And that's where I'd like to finish my point, is if pedophilia is then labeled as legal, like you said, five years from now or something, is that something that you as our mayor would support?
No.
Okay, well, that's very good for me to hear. That's very good for me to hear. And in closing, I know there's a lot of emotions exchanged in this room today, but the overall lasting point is the American flag does represent us all. The North Dakota flag represents all of us locals, and those flags are sufficient to be raised in our city council. That's all.
I will give you two minutes, and then we're going to move on.
Thank you.
Because we can go round and round for hours tonight with everybody.
I appreciate that. Rodney, Minot, North Dakota, again. Mr. Mayor, I don't think you realize how big you stepped in it. And you better get, you better step back and rethink this. And again, you and Ms. Evans are the only two that used the term hatred tonight. Nobody out here did. They're angry. Please, please hear their anger. And hopefully, you can recognize, like this young man just said, and I mentioned earlier, that flag represents all of us. We don't need to fly any flags below it that represent special interest groups. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So at this point in the evening, then, we will move on to our miscellaneous and discussion items. This is 10.1, the recycling discussion. Assistant Director of Public Works will provide additional information as requested on the August 17 city council meeting, and I'm wondering if he is coming up from downstairs. So-
Here he is.
Mr. Jason Sorenson. Good evening, Mr. Sorenson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So based on our discussion last week regarding recycling and transfer facility-
I'm having a hard time hearing. Could we close the doors?
I'll have Mr. Jonison here. And Jason, if you could, maybe just pull the microphone up there a little bit.
Yeah, there we go.
Thank you.
So like I said, just a continuation from last week regarding the discussion we had regarding a transfer, transfer facility, and I've had some opportunity to look a little deeper at it, look at some costs, and provide you with some options. So I guess from, from my standpoint and the standpoint of Public Works, you know, we're looking at this, at this recycling, we're trying to fit it into a big holistic picture of, of the landfill going forward, you know, for many, many years from today. So, you know, if we look at our current approved expansion, we have about 20 to 25 years of capacity there with just what's been permitted, and there's, there would be room for additional years. So we're gonna be in this location for a very long time. But even when you look out into the future, say we have a landfill, new landfill, 15, 20 miles out of town, I see the need for a local drop-off, so our residents don't have to drive, you know, 20, 20 miles to drop off a couch or whatever that may be. So I, I find the transfer facility kind of being as a, as a hub to a, a bigger piece of the puzzle that, that will come later, where, you know, if we need that drop-off, we can add on to our existing transfer facility and make it a, a bigger facility and doing more things for us. And then I guess the other thing we should talk about is where do we want truck traffic ultimately accessing the landfill? Do we want it to continue going down 20th Avenue through a residential area, or would we like it to go down 37th Avenue, which is a commercial industrial corridor? So option one, you know, we, we can build the transfer facility within our current footprint, kind of off, off to the side, away from our disposal areas, and, and that can work. It has a, you know, pros. It has a minor amount of site prep required. It's basically flat, flat area. There's really no roadway extensions that have to be built or constructed, and it's less costly. But when you look out over the course of, you know, 15, 20, 25, 30 years from now, it is not very user-friendly when we start talking about a drop-off point. If, if we were to someday move that access to the south and our transfer facility is built in this location, you know, just to drop off something, you're, it's about a two-mile round trip to get up to that red dot that you see on this picture and then back out to 37th Avenue. And then, you know, this option would continue to run that truck traffic through the developed residential area. This is option two that we penciled out based on the discussion last week. So there'd be an access off of 37th Avenue, and then the transfer facility would be built, you know, down in, in that corner of that property. It's more conducive to our future operations, I think, and that it would reduce all that truck traffic through 20th Avenue. The cons of this are really that it's, it's a more costly option, and that's what I'll get into next. We had some concept drawings done, and this is, you know, in concept what that, what that facility would look like on the south end of the landfill area. There's about a 500-foot stacking area there, so we, we would have to build a turn lane to appease the county for, for truck stacking, but majority of our stacking could happen internally into our own property. There'd be a scale house relocation, two scales, and then our transfer facility. Like I said, this would all, this is, there's no throwaway infrastructure here. This is something that can sit in this location and, and serve us for many, many, many years. So when you go through all of the things that need to happen for this construction, you come up to about $3.267 million. This includes the cost of the transfer facility. So really, the, the southern entrance adds about $2,017,000, above and beyond what we've been discussing to date regarding recycling and the transfer facility. So adding this number into the, this is basically the slide that I've shown many times. It shows all the different components and parts and pieces that, that need to get constructed for the transfer facility and for recycling to take place. So we end up with a grand total of just over $3.9 million, and we still have that million dollars set aside. So we're at a shortfall of about $2.99 million. So in talking with-
Could you stop the slide, please?
That one?
Thank you.
So in talking with the finance department, we're projecting cash reserves this year and next year in the sanitation department. And then we also have sales tax infrastructure funds available if this is something that the council would like to move forward on. There is funding available, and this, you know, could happen if, if the council desires to spend those funds on, on this sort of piece of infrastructure. So I just threw down a timeline to kind of project when things get constructed and then what the, the rate of needing those, those funds would be. And you can see that here. You know, basically, we could start designing a facility in the latter part of this year. We could get a, something out for bid by early next year. We could construct a transfer facility and some of the access roads through next, next summer's construction season. Then the remainder of the roadwork and then moving scales and the scale shack and all that would be early in, in 2022. And then also in early '22, we would start buying some of the recycling components, like the compactor and the trailers, get containers on order, and then we could begin recycling in late summer, early fall of 2022. With that, I tried to keep the conversation short, pointed, and with that, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Any questions for Jason Alderman-Pitner?
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, just a clarification. So the $3 million is if shortfall would be if we moved the, excuse me, the entrance to 37th, correct? That, that $3 million would include that?
Mayor Simma, Alderman-Pitner, that's correct.
Okay. And then, just a continuation.
Please.
What's the shortfall if we kept the, the site where it's at, the entrance where it's at?
That's basically the numbers that I presented last week, so it's around about a million dollars.
Thank you.
Alderman-Janser, did you have a question? I thought I saw your hand.
Yeah, I, I guess I wanted to be clear on the proposed source of the funds, and it's maybe on the next slide, or maybe that's more, yeah.
So currently, the, the money that we have set aside, we have community facilities funds, and then we have some that were, some funds that were budgeted in 2018 for a design of the transfer facility back then.
Okay, I understand that, but the, the remainder or the, yeah, the, the roughly $3 million that we don't have, I guess that's the funding source that I'm interested in hearing about.
Mr. Mike Field.
I think you said something about reserves of-
Mr. Mayor, Alderman-Janser, we took a look at what we have sitting in cash available in the sanitation fund. City ordinance requires us to have a one, a one-month reserve, and as a matter of practice, we have increased that to three months operating reserve. So taking out what we have currently committed, our three-twelfth reserves, we still have roughly a million dollars that would be available in the sanitation fund to fund this project. In the 2020 and 2021 budget, we are also projecting a surplus that could add a source of additional funds as well. We would propose that any other funds could come from the sales tax, the infrastructure funds. We have money available in that fund as well that could cover the difference.
Further questions?
I do have a motion that I'd like Jason to stay up for in case there's questions on it.
Okay. Any further questions before a motion? Alderman-Patogula.
More in line of a comment. Have we flown this idea of an entrance station on 37th Avenue by the property owners in that neighborhood, particularly Trinity? Avenue by the property owners in that neighborhood, particularly Trinity?
Mayor Seba, Alderman Padugula, you know, I, I guess, you know, not, not recently. When we did the focus groups and we talked about the expansion, I think it was a secret at that point that, that our intent was to move that entrance down to 37th Avenue. Really, when we started talking about the expansion, the majority of phone calls I got in my office were from residents along 20th Avenue that were happy to hear that we were considering moving the entrance elsewhere, so.
Following up on that, you know, I, I guess in terms of the movement, I'm, I'm fine with this. Two comments, I think. One, talking with people in the neighborhood, I, I agree that the residents along the current access are not pleased and haven't been, and that's been a real issue, and the road's going to have to get rebuilt at some point. I think that should mostly be on us rather than on them, to be honest with you. But the other thing is, if we do move the entrance, and it looks very aesthetic, it looks very nice, actually, with the trees and fences and burns and stuff, but if we do move the entrance, the one thing I would very much ask for is we not have any kind of, I think you referred to it as external, I can't read my, stacking, that was, I can't read my writing. That's, I'm not even sure with a, with a, with a dedicated turn lane that I'm comfortable with that. Now, the others may disagree with him, but that's such a central street. It's, it's very nicely built, and the engineer reminded me of that. But I, I would encourage you very carefully to look at trying to minimize, because there's a lot of traffic, people are moving fast, there's going to be more traffic building, and I don't want to, you know, I, I have no problems aesthetically if, if we have an entrance there and a facility there. I'm okay with that. But I don't want a line of trucks. So I guess that's, that's my opinion.
Mayor Seba, Alderman Padugula, so we've looked at that. Like, recently, when we had the free dumping at the landfill, we, we monitor kind of what our stacking distance is right now, and really in the last year or two, probably the longest we've seen since we added two scales, is about 500 feet. So what we've done in this, the concept drawings that you saw is that the first scale is 500 feet back from County Road 14, and then we'd build that road going in so you could actually stack too wide, so you could actually get about 1,000 feet worth of vehicle stacking. So yeah, our intent is to not have any vehicles stacked out on the turn lane along County Road 14 or, or anywhere out there.
Thank you. That reassures me greatly.
Alderman Pitner.
Thank you, Mayor. My question might be for Finance Director Lakefield. In regards to picking up some of the financing with, with additional sales tax, and I'm not asking you, Dave, for an exact number, but do we have, like, the city hall project, retaining wall, or Fire Station 5, are those items also in line to maybe receive some of those sales tax dollars as funding?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pitner, not this particular fund. They would be able to be used for either the city hall project, or, excuse me, the Fire Station project, or the city hall retaining wall, anything that could be considered infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Janser.
Just, Jason, could you remind me, how many trucks a day are we talking about between our own hauling and the commercial operators that come to the landfill?
Mayor Seba, Alderman Janser, I believe we're in the neighborhood of, on average, about 250. And that wouldn't just be trucks, it could be passenger vehicles as well, but about 250 vehicles a day on average. And that number goes up certain times during the summer, too.
Okay, so I mean, okay, that, so that would include, like, me bringing my stuff out there?
That's correct.
And you don't know offhand the number of, like, you know, bigger hauling vehi-
Not off the top of my head. I'd have to look a little further.
Okay. I was just trying to get an idea of sort of what the, yeah, okay.
Further questions for Mr. Sorenson. If not, I would look to Alderman Evans here for her.
Before I make a motion, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege. I thought I was going to hold it together, but my dad just whispered and watched and walked in, took me or just burnt me, a veteran of 21 years of the United States Air Force, who was with me last week when the flag was raised, as a proud veteran and a dad. So I just want to say thank you. Okay, back to recycling. So here's the thing. I think Jason has done great work with Dave and Sue to find the money. I mean, you know, we have now new sources of revenue that have been identified, but I, I get we still have some concerns about the impact of COVID and just resources in general. So what I'd like to do is, let's do this in baby steps. Let's take this a step at a time as we sort of see how things transpire. The entrance is going to have to be a discussion we have regardless if we, you know, move forward with recycling or not. This is, just brought it sort of to the forefront. So what my motion is, is I move that we authorize Jason, the Assistant Public Works Director, to negotiate a scope and fee schedule with CPS Engineering and return to us no later than December 31st with a contract for the design and plan, just the design and plan, of a recycling transfer facility and a new landfill entrance, along with any budget amendments that would be needed to transfer funds from reserves to appropriate accounts. So, yeah, that, it would authorize Jason to, we have a, a master service agreement already with CPS Engineering. It would authorize him to negotiate a scope and fee with them and then be able to come back to us, so no money right now, come back to us before the end of the year, sooner if that happens, with a contract that would, and he can explain it more, about the design and plan of what the design and plan of the transfer facility would look like and a new entrance would look like. So we would have a better understanding of what that cost would look like, and then hopefully, you know, be in a position to approve a budget amendment, to move forward with that plan, you know, before the end of the year to transfer those funds out of the reserves, to at least start the transfer facility and the new entrance planning for 2021. So I think, you know, it's a cautious approach. We're still, we're still moving forward, but I think we need to, you know, move forward with recycling, and let's take this one step at a time, and perhaps start with, with this no-cost planning that Jason would bring back to us, and we could then take the next step after that.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, and I would just either look, maybe Jason, or with our city attorney, is that can we be specific with CPS Engineering? Do we have to do an RFQ or RFP with any of those? Or do, are they already qualified for that scope of work under other contracts?
Mr. Mayor, we've done a RFQ in the past, and CPS was selected, so we just have a, it's called a task order agreement.
Okay.
So basically, it just lays out all of the contract language, and then each time we have a project that comes up, we, they, we issue another task order. And then each individual task order has a separate set of, you know, scope and fees that we work through.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on the motion. Alderman Pitner.
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, so there would be no cost to the city for, for that design or anything like that?
Well, that's, I guess, negotiating and, and getting to the point of getting a consultant on board, that doesn't have a cost. Yeah, so CPS would have to get an architect on board, you know, so we would get an architect on board, do a little preliminary planning, so everybody kind of knows the direction we're, we're heading, and then CPS would come to us with a, with a scope and a budget for what it would cost to design and build the transfer station and the entrance facility.
Okay.
Alderman Ross.
Jason, I want to thank you for putting in all the work into this, and also our conversation a couple weeks ago. You gave me the names of some contacts in other communities in which I reached out and had some lengthy conversations about their recycling programs, the pros, the cons, the ups and downs. So I feel you covered your base as well, and you did a, you did a bang-up job. I appreciate it. Nice work.
Thank you. Further discussion? Thank you, Jason. We do have a motion and a second here, and that is to authorize Public Works Director to negotiate a scope and fee schedule with CPS Engineering, return to city council no later than the end of the year, December 31st, 2020, with a contract for the design and plan of recycling transfer facility and a new landfill entrance, along with any budget amendments needed to transfer funds from reserves to appropriate accounts, if that's summarized well enough.
Yep, that's why I gave it to you. Yep, you can keep that copy if you-
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, please call to roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Pitma?
Yes. Motion is approved. That is the end of our agenda for this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Olson. Alderwoman Olson.
Since we are still under miscellaneous and discussion items, I'd like just to bring up something.
Please.
I know that our jobs up here are to represent. That's why we were elected, that's why we sit in these seats, that's why we make these difficult decisions. But as an individual tonight, I was misrepresented. I was misrepresented by all of the Christians that were in the room who wanted to quote scripture. They were doing it, what they said was correct, their, their scripture was correct, but they were doing it with a judgmental heart. And as a Christian, that is not what I have been taught. I have been saved by my Savior Jesus Christ from my sins, and I have been taught to love others and to not judge others. And so I don't feel that I was represented well this evening, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Any other items under other discussion? If not, we're heading towards adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Alderman Janser, second by Alderman Pitner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.